The order. This is, the notice was properly posted on October 4th, that's what I was looking for. And Mrs. Campisi, would you please call the roll? Present.
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 Thank you very much. Before we get started, I'd like for everybody to stand. We'll take a moment of silence. Pastor Scoy, we will deliver a short prayer and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, please. This is all about the loss of a life in Israel a year ago today. The loss of American families and friends because of Helene, and now we have another one, Milburn, that's already a cat five. Let's think about our friends and families all around the world.
Merciful and everlasting God, our Father, we just want to pause just for a moment to still say thank you for being our God. Dear God, we lift up all of the families, the survivors of the tragedy, the travesty that took place one year ago today. We pray for every one of the family members that were represented in all of those losses of lives. And dear God, I guess we'll be selfish just for a moment to say we want to pray specifically even for the forty-six families of American families that were lost. God, we pray for protection. We pray, God, that things like that some way, somehow would cease. And God, we understand with these hurricanes, the one that has already taken place. We pray, God, for the families of those who lost lives. We pray for those who were injured, not just physically, but also mentally, emotionally, psychologically. God, be with them. You said you are near to those that are crushed and are brokenhearted. And God, we pray for those in the Tampa Bay area even now that you would put a hedge or protection around them. We pray, God, we know that you control the winds, the waves. You control all of it. So, God, we pray that you would just move it into another direction. And God, we just want to say thank you that the time to pray was allowed for today. This is our prayer. We pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you.
Mrs. Griffin, timing is perfect. Our pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge the pledge to the flag of the United States of America. Consider republic, for which it stands, our nation.
Thank everyone here. Let's go to our public session. I think I have one individual. Reverend Forsyth.
I'm Roy Forsyth, and I want to go to heaven. And I expect most of you sitting here, if you're a Christian, you want to go to heaven as well. There are twelve to fifteen hundred men over here in the county jail that need to hear the gospel of Jesus Christ so that they can have the hope of heaven as well. I've shared the gospel with thousands of young men, both black and white, at the county jail for the past eighteen years. I started in two thousand and six, coming and bringing bibles, Bible studies, doing one-on-one counseling, meeting with young men who have had a death in the family to console them. And this is not a Catholic Protestant thing, you know? Paul's letter to the Corinthians said, "Neither the one who plants nor the one who waters is anything, but only God who causes the growth." The church has been meeting the needs of forgiveness and redemption for two thousand years. When I come with my team, we meet face-to-face with inmates, talk to them about their problems, and try to give them a hope of the future when they're many times in despair. On December the twentieth last year, our ministry handed out a big Christmas cookie to every inmate in the jail and a bottle of shampoo. And we've been doing that for more than ten years at Christmas time. I was told that we would no longer have access to the jail on that day due to lack of staff. Now, I hear from News Channel Nine that a new program has begun at the jail called Stand Up, a program that is a partnership between the jail and the diversion hub, a program led by John Parker to reach out to young men. It is a program launched early this year. My prayer is that it will be successful. The jail found the staff for this program, but not for the one that I've been leading for the last eighteen years. I'm just saying, the gospel message of Jesus Christ has been changing lives for the better for two thousand years. So, when can I get back in the jail? That's my question.
Thank you very much, Reverend. Let's go to item one. Discussion and possible action on approval of the minutes from the last meeting September ninth.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Mrs. Campisi, would you please call the roll? Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Item number two. Mrs. Garner's report. Yes, you're up fast. Is it on the screen? Yes, it is. Thank you.
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Great, it's working. And before I get started in my report, I do need to mention that on September twenty-sixth at seven fifty-one a.m., we did find a female resident that was unresponsive. She was transported to the hospital, life-saving measures were given, and ultimately she passed away. While we're still waiting for the investigation to unfold, what I can say is that a preliminary verbal report from the ME said that it appears to be natural causes. And the last observed site check for her cell was six forty-one a.m., well within the parameters set forth by the jail standards. In this report, I'm just going to cover a lot of what I usually do. Academy update, resident welfare and programs, our staff development, infrastructure. Most importantly, probably our medical transition, and then quite a few statistics at the end of this. We're currently at two hundred and sixty-seven full-time employees. We have fifteen detention officers, one detention support officer, and three civilians that are in the academy that started on September eighth. And if you look at the number of officers that we have, the ones that are detention certified, this time last year, we were at a hundred and nineteen, and we're now at one hundred and fifty-nine. We also have twenty-nine contract employees, and those are from our vendor Viemed Health, and they're the ones that are providing the site check teams to, when we're overnights and weekends, when we need additional support to get our site checks done in a timely manner. As far as our training updates, I misspoke. Our September academy started on the third. We do have seven contractors that are also in there. They are slated to graduate October twenty-fourth. We have also hired an assistant training director who comes with many, many years' experience, both in jail and corrections. We're excited to have him on board. His name is Mike Duncan, and he's already hit the ground running, and he started leading some classes and identified some areas where we need to bolster our training. The next thing I want to talk about, first, I want to point out some of the statistics that come from the National Institute of Justice and the National Institute of Corrections. According to the N I J, correctional officers stress stems from two primary sources. The demands of responding to critical incidents within a correctional facility and the mundane organizational stressors ranging from understaffed shifts to toxic work environments. You can see some of the stats there, and new recruits, when they start, they're pretty low on the spectrum for all the different parameters listed there, including anger, anxiety, PTSD, depression, and suicidality. As they become correction officers and they have experience in the job, you can see all of those numbers increase significantly. And then the bottom one is from the Vera Institute, and it was posted by the National Institute of Corrections. And the main thing I want you to see there is that the lifespan of our correctional officers is significantly less than that of the general public, which is fifty-nine years compared to seventy-five years. In response to this, and some of what we took back from the ACA conference that we went to a couple of weeks ago, is we created a wellness unit. I have hired a licensed counselor for our staff. She comes with experience in detention, law enforcement, and along with our residents. She's very well-qualified. She's helped run diversion courts for another county, and she's also provided wellness initiatives for law enforcement and detention. Very excited to have her on board, and I think this is a position that we needed for a very long time. She's going to be promoting our mental, emotional, physical well-being of our staff, and she'll provide direct counseling services, wellness programs, critical incident debriefings. She will offer critical support to staff, and at times she will offer that support to our residents as well. Some of the key performance indicators for her position is to see a reduction in employee turnover, a reduction in call-outs, and an FMLA usage related to specifically mental health, and improved job satisfaction and retention and morale. We've also, adjacent to the office that we have assigned her, we're creating a lactation room and a wellness room. Those are two separate rooms that are connected. This will be primarily supported by vendors who have offered to donate some supplies, such as furniture and other resources that we need for the room. It prioritizes officer wellness and mental health. And the research benefits of a wellness room in this specific career field is reduced stress levels, improved decision-making, increased energy and productivity, and enhanced physical health. So. Okay, so now we'll talk a little bit about our transition to medical. As you all know, our turnkey contracts end on the ninth at midnight. And since we got the notification of that, we've been working feverishly to stand up our own in-house medical unit while also simultaneously crafting an RFP for both medical and mental health vendors that may be able to come in and provide those services to our residents. So, as we're preparing the RFP, we've been doing a lot of the things in the background to do our in-house medical. So far, we've hired sixty-two medical staff. We have a mental health consultant that's on board, and then we have contracts that need to be approved, and you'll see many of them today. So, we have a medical consultant, A B Med Healthcare, that the contract, as you read it, it's kind of à la carte. I encourage you to kind of read through it, and hopefully you will approve it. It provides a lot of different services that we may need or that we definitely need, including providing oversight for our medical, helping us write policies. They could even assist with the RFP process. Then our electronic health records, there's a contract for that. We're just going to stick with Corey M R, just to keep it simple for now. That's what Turnkey was using, and we didn't want to upset the apple cart too much and try to switch to a completely different vendor right in the midst of trying to stand up the own, you know, our in-house medical unit. Temporary staffing is Viemed Healthcare. As I mentioned before, we've already got a contract in place to do the temporary, the contractors that come in and do the site checks. Pharmaceuticals is Diamond Pharmacy. We are currently utilizing them through Turnkey. We're just going to continue down that path until we can get stabilized, and then we can start exploring other providers for any of these services, really. And then for our laboratory, we want to continue to use D L O. The rest of the services that we need for the medical are, we're just transitioning over. As vendors, we're getting accounts set up for them. They don't really require a contract, so that's why you don't see any information on those in the agenda today. And then some of the things that are outstanding is med mal insurance. We're still, we're looking into that. I know that that was a concern of the county, and so we've really been doing some diligence and making sure that we're asking for the right type of insurance that will meet our needs. And of course, we'll, we'll get with counsel and ensure that whatever we select is going to meet the county's needs and the needs of the trust. And then the other thing that our health services administrator would like to secure is agreements for clinical time. So, we're using the same provider every time for our clinics that, when we have residents that need to get set out. In addition to all of this, we, our A E Ds have aged out, so we did purchase eighteen new A E Ds for the facility. They are all throughout the facility. There's at least one on every floor, and then some additional ones in some of the high-traffic areas. Our renovations update. Still working on the sixth floor. We're, right now, we're working on the showers. You can see the showers right now and how much better they look. And so far, they seem to be holding up fairly well. I think that they are exploring some other options because there are a few areas that are starting to peel up from the bed liner material that they were using to try to test it out. We don't know what that looks like just yet. They're still exploring all of our options. And I've even asked them to just reach out to a specialist that can refurbish the showers and see what our options are. My understanding is the construction of the facility greatly limits what we're able to do in those showers. It's not like we can just put an insert in there because of the concrete and the way that the plumbing is, but we're still going to explore all of our options. Resident welfare and programs, we have partnered with the Lynn Institute and the Arts Council, and we will be having an art workshop. I believe it's going to be every other week, starting at the end of this month. Very excited to have them on board. Most of you have been in the facility, and you probably recognize that we have a lot of talented people that have no creative outlet in our facility. And this is something that, not only have they asked for, but I think is going to be very beneficial as far as giving them some new skills and creating partnerships with people in the community that they can then follow up with once they get released. On September fourteenth, team came in with members of the community, and they distributed gift bags to the entire population. That went very smoothly, and I believe Speaker Steele is here, and he can give an update on that later on. And then, this isn't new this month, but I just do want to call attention to the mental health and substance abuse intake screening data. We're continuing to collect that information to drive some of the decisions regarding our programming and what our residents need the most. And it'll also help with some of the diversion programs. So, on the intake screening, this is forty-four days of data tracked from August twentieth. And there's, two thousand eight hundred and one people were brought in since that date, and thirty-seven percent of them screened positive for at least one category. This is all disaggregated, so there are going to be people that have multiple things going on. But you can see that three hundred and eighty-two individuals screened positive for having mental health issues. Two hundred and twenty-one had opioid or heroin use issues, two hundred and eighty-four alcohol. We had ninety veterans. Five hundred and fifty-five people identified as homeless. And then those that scored on the cage aid, and those are people that may not admit to having substance use problems, but as they go through the assessment, which is a four-part question, questionnaire, a hundred and eighteen of those screened positive for that.
Mrs. Garner.
Yes, sir.
On the veterans and the homeless, why have those numbers shot up?
It's still too soon to tell. I'm not really sure. I think it's because we've started identifying them a little bit easier.
Beyond the self-identification? So, we had forty-five veterans at one time, pretty constant, self-identified. And now we've added another forty-five.
When we look at that number, that's the current population. When you say forty-five, these are the people that have been brought in. A lot of them may have been released. So, if there's ninety that are coming in in a forty-four-day period, maybe, you know, a handful of them are staying, which makes it, you know, forty-something.
So, essentially, we're two months behind the power curve on this data. Is that fair?
Well, not, well.
Month and a half. I'll give you a month and a half.
Yes and no. This is a month and a half worth of data, but we are getting this information very soon after intake. Usually, it's the next day. If it's a weekend, it may be two or three days after they've been brought in. The goal with this eventually will be to get this information and start getting resources into the hands of those individuals as soon as we can.
And all this data is aggregated in a data collection system, correct?
If you call a spreadsheet a data collection system.
Well, that's a start, you know? We're trying, I know IT's trying their best to bring on a new program.
It is. We're using the resources that we have available right now just to make sure that we can capture this data.
I'm just shocked at how we've shot up here in most categories. Maybe it's the summer months. I don't know.
It is. And again, this is all of.
Maybe it's the stress in life.
Well, and this is all of the intakes. It's not just the people that are currently in our, you know, in our, our care. So, it's out of twenty-eight oh one people.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next page, we've already kind of discussed, but you can see that, you know, we had ninety veterans, five hundred and fifty-five people identified as homeless or unhoused, three hundred and seventy-nine screened positive for having some type of mental health concern. And then we've broken it down under those three categories because obviously there's a lot of comorbidities involved in our line of work. IT has been extremely busy in trying to stand up the medical health record system and getting equipment identified and given to our medical. They changed out the computer system in medical, and now they're installing them for our medical personnel. And you can see some of the things that our security systems, our chief of the security systems has done. He's repaired access control to a number of elevators and doors, deployed handheld rodeos to executive staff, received mobile radio for central control. And these are all the rodeos that you all approved several months ago that just helps us conduct our jobs more safely. Pest control, we instituted tickets that the residents can submit on their own versus trying to rely on officers or staff to submit those tickets. We felt like if they can handle it themselves, it's probably more efficient to do so. These tickets go directly to our fire safety director, who is over our pest control applicator, who's certified by the state of Oklahoma. And we instituted this towards the end of July, and it took a little bit for the residents to catch on that they had the ability to report this on their own. So, you can see the numbers looked fairly low in July. In August, they figured it out, and you can see that they reported a high number of, you know, different issues that were resolved. And then in September, you can see those numbers are going down specifically for the bed bugs. And we'll continue to track those over time to make sure that we're making progress in our pest control efforts. I do want to talk about a few things involving our Criminal Investigations Division. They had eleven cases opened in September. Seven cases were closed. Five of them were resident-on-resident. We did have two attempted suicides, and then we had several destructions of evidence by a resident. The, a couple of months ago, we talked about two detention officers that were arrested for facilitating, bringing contraband into the facility. We had discussed having a press conference, but in the meantime, this case has grown, and we're not quite ready to release any additional details because we do believe it would compromise the ongoing investigation. CID is also currently working with Oklahoma City on a introduction of contraband through the jail. And hopefully, I'll have an update on that next, next month. And then, most recently, we did have a detention officer that was arrested. He had worked at the facility for a number of years. He was hired on under the sheriff's office. And he was, he was stealing money during the resident property process of the intake. We didn't realize that this was happening until somebody reported it. We opened an investigation, and that's what we discovered, is that he had been taking money from residents. It started out with five hundred and forty-nine dollars, and once he was interviewed and interrogated, he discussed that it had been over two thousand dollars, and it had been going on for quite some time. They're still reviewing all of those cases to see if there's any linkage to anybody reporting missing money, and they're much smaller amounts, and if so, then we'll go ahead and file additional charges. I'm sorry.
So, according to the. What are the charges filed now?
It's embezzlement by Bailey.
But nothing else out of the report from CID thus far?
No, nothing else. Commissioner?
Yeah.
Did you have?
No, I was trying to answer the question.
Okay. Our average, our average daily population for September was one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven. Average daily booking was just under fifty-eight people per day. The average length of stay for anybody that was booked in in September is almost seven days. If you look at our average daily population through the years, twenty. years, 2021, it was 1,683. 2022 was 1,587. 2023 was 1,511. Still don't know where we're at yet for 2024. Our current population seems to be declining now. Let's see. Where is the number? It's on the last page. Agency arrests for September, and we have some historical information there. Just for reference, Oklahoma City this month accounts for 62.3% of the number of people that are being brought in, followed by Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office, 15%. And then you'll have some stragglers with Edmund, OHP, and Midwest City. The total number of bookings was 1,795. 1,352 of those were male, 443 were female. As far as recidivism goes, and this is a report we're still working on, I think that we can capture even more valuable information. We've just got to figure out how to get it out of our system. But you can see our recidivism rate for the current population. These are people that currently are in our facility. It's still pretty high. If you look by race for the male population, 36 are identify as Asian, 85% identify as black, 68% identify as Hispanic, 33% are Middle Eastern, 85% identify as Native American, 78% identify as white, and then 37% have an unknown race. They did not disclose. As far as females go, 100% of the people in our population right now that are females have recidivated, if they identify as Asian, 88%. If they identify as black, 61%. If they identify as Hispanic, 100%. If Native American, 76% if they are white. Top 10 charges for September, and this is our current population. We currently have 131 people that are there for murder, 16 for manslaughter. Of those, 120 are male and 18 are female. And then, the total number of charges, and this includes anybody that may have multiple charges, we have 1,461 people that have at least one or more felonies. Correcting that, not people, charges. So that could be three charges for one individual. And then 989 charges for misdemeanors. Possession of CDS continues to be one of the top charges that people are in for at 21%. Current population as of October 1st is 1,536. Compare that to this time last year, it's 1,507. We have 148 that are currently sentenced to DOC. 179 are 50 or older, and we have 24 that are awaiting awaiting transport to Veneta. The average wait time right now is 67 days. The longest is 213. We have three that are awaiting their second trip to Veneta, and one that's awaiting their fourth trip to OFC. And that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions, comments? I feel like I covered a lot in a very short time.
Questions? Mr. Washington, do us all a favor. Sit down. Don't interrupt while someone else is presenting, please.
Can I put my statement in?
It's too late. You've already missed the public session.
Y'all started earlier. The school started 1:30.
Any questions for Mrs. Garner?
I've got one.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thanks.
Mrs. Griffin.
Quick question on the ability of the residents to report pests. Is there a follow-up that occurs with the residence that made the initial report after it's treated? Is there a way to track that?
Beyond, when he answers the request, he'll say that he sprayed, or, you know, whatever he did to handle the situation. But as far as going back and revisiting with that person, I mean, he could potentially do that, but I think we need to get control of it first because right now, he's just running from one thing to another. And to go back and revisit with everybody he's already seen, I think would be, it would cut into the time that he's actually...
Oh, so there's a possible possibility that those numbers reflect the same person reporting something multiple times?
There's a possibility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Director. And I would be remiss if I personally didn't acknowledge all the hard work of the team in preparing for the medical transition. I know that has demanded a lot of hours and a lot of creativity, so thank you for that. I have a couple of questions. The first, the number of individuals awaiting OFC transport. Average length of 67 days, 24. So that is well over 1,000 days for those individuals that have been in our care, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And it would not surprise you that that represents for, if we were to bill that at the same, at our cost of detention, that's going to be a six-figure impact on our operations.
Absolutely.
Just for those individuals that were currently serving today.
I would almost say seven figures, but yes.
Okay. My follow-up, if I might, Mr. Chairman, on a different tangent, and this is, you and I have had this rhythm for the year and a half I've been on there. I'm going to ask you a question, knowing that it may not be good to go today, but something I would like to explore in the future. It may surprise the general public that even though somebody is in a detention and is an adult, there are educational opportunities that either are or should be afforded to those individuals, should they choose to take advantage of them.
Yes.
And so in subsequent conversations, I would like to start diving into the educational data. How many might be actually pursuing what might be in front of them, or something in that space?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm happy to do so.
Mr. Chairman, real quick. So the numbers, the way I see them, is your employment number looks like it's about 360 to 370 individuals once you bring on medical staff, and then everybody else that you've now brought on.
That's correct.
You're budgeted for 320. Is there an impact there?
I'm certain there is, but the money that we were spending every month for our medical vendor, we believe, may cover that.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Mr. Washington, that's the second time. An outlier, and you're interrupting conversation here. Please, show some respect. That's incorrect. Yeah. Anybody else? Mr. Johnson?
Well, Reverend talked about not being allowed back in, I know it's on the report, but do we know why that, he said that the shorter staff, but another program's been added?
So the women are, from his group, are, they're coming in right now because we have somebody that can help facilitate that. We also have our chaplain there that sees the men currently. It's a matter of trying to balance the religious and spiritual needs with the other chromogenic factors, in trying to make sure that we are able to just balance both. And until I have the staff available to dedicate to having somebody, you know, escort them around, I don't have the ability to let them in.
But we brought in another program, right? He spoke of another program that was added earlier.
We did, but how many religious programs do we want versus the ones that also have, they speak to the chromogenic factors, like education, mental health, well-being, nutrition? That's where I'm, we're having to balance that.
And I understand that, but someone's been coming in for 18 years, and now that, for the size of, that's just, you know, it's dedicated, 18 years of coming in.
Well, everybody stopped coming in at that time, and we've slowly been adding back what we should. So, and it's just, I don't have the staff for that. And there are other factors involved that...
Often, was it coming in?
I believe it was once a week. The individual that we had that was escorting them around no longer works for us, which is why we don't have anybody available. And if I pull from one of our programs to escort them for half a day or a whole day, then that means some of our programs and some of the needs that they have that are outside of the spiritual realm, they're not getting, they're not getting that piece, that education. And some of these programs are also grant-funded, so it impacts their ability to receive the grant funding.
So once a week for how long? Is it an hour, two hours?
I'm not sure. I believe it was about half a day, or not all day.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Director Garner, I just want to echo what has been said by Mr. Johnson. There is an intangible there that we can't see. When a person is bringing in what I hold to as something that is, that is and can be life-changing. So there is an intangible, again, that we just, we can't see. And I know that it is helpful. So I would just ask if you would even try to work with him, if nothing else, to look at allowing them in once a month. It's not once a week, but once a month. I mean, a little is better than nothing. But again, there is an intangible that is life-changing, and I just hope we would consider that.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Garner. I've missed, whoops, excuse me, one more.
Motion to...
Oh.
Motion to accept the report.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Kimpisi Colarova, please. Technology. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Sherman, your report, finances, invoices.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Okay, there we go. Okay, so for September 2024, the total revenue was $2,839,090, which gave us a negative variance of $45,467. Oklahoma Department of Corrections revenue was $101,520 for August boarding and was below budget by $8,480. Our telephone revenue was $100,870 and was below budget by $19,130. And part of that is because of the rate change through NCIC that we lowered for the residents. Our commissary revenue was $52,104, and that was below budget by $2,896. Our municipalities' contract boarding revenue for the month was only $62. And of course, our Oklahoma City contract is still pending. Fees and reimbursements, we received the year-end workers' compensation audit refund from OESA in the amount of $88,560. So our expenses for September 2024, total expenses were $3,259,449 for a negative variance of $196,155. Salaries, wages, and benefits totaled $1,413,623 for the month, and that was below budget by $121,238. Our resident onsite medical care was $666,226 for the month, which was our turnkey comprehensive medical services, which of course, terminate at midnight on Tuesday. Our resident off-site medical care was $310,726 and was above budget by $240,726. And part of that is still catching up on some off-site medical bills from previous FYs that we're just now finding, and getting those paid and taken care of. The utility bill for electricity was $32,118 and was below budget by $7,822. Professional services and legal fees were $21,071. Professional services and other fees were $89,934, which were for painters, janitorial services, professional consultants, and biomedical staffing. Our telecommunications services were $22,615. $12,450 of that will be reimbursed from the county for the ARPAN networking project. Telecommunications equipment for the ARPAN networking project was $35,721, which will be reimbursed as well. And we did spend $27,041 for kitchen equipment, and $24,291 was of equipment that we still owed to Summit when they left. So the summary for September of 2024, for the month, jail operations produced a net loss for the month of $420,359. And of course, it was mainly due to resident off-site medical care of $310,726. Cash on hand after paying September invoices and payroll and benefits is estimated to be at $2.8 million. Our FY '24, '25 budget, as far as our budget comparison to actual, we were budgeted at this point to be $321,203, but we right now currently are on a favorable balance, looking So anticipated billing, we are still working on getting all the information there. We have digitized the information as far as our off-site medical for Department of Corrections and Department of Mental Health. We have that digitized. All we're doing now is we're trying to drill down and find all of the bills that were associated with each one of those residents. So we don't have that information on hand, so we're having to get with the medical providers to make sure we have accurate information as far as those bills are concerned. We have also identified residents who fall within the category. So this is just going back to what we're talking about, which is transportation and outside medical costs for those that are in state custody as opposed to being in county custody. Our NCIC revenue, our total revenue is, right now, is $1,328,989, with a monthly average of $120,817. As you can see, the call volume, the video volume, and the messaging volume has increased a little bit on all of that, but it especially has increased since we lowered the prices of access to... Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So there's that. Does anybody have any questions about that, since I...
I do.
Yes, sir.
When do you think we can, it's been, what, three months since we reduced the home rate?
Yes, sir.
30%. So when might we take a step, another 10 or 20%? I mean, how long before we make that next decision, if we can make that decision?
That would be up to the trust, but from a financial perspective, I think we could do 10 to 15 comfortably. I don't know that I'd want to go as high as 30 yet until we...
30 was the first bite at the apple. Excuse me. So would you say in a couple more months of information?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. So by December?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions on this segment?
No.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a plug number or a hedge in here for the money that we're supposed to be receiving for Oklahoma City?
No.
But you're still including the expenses?
Yes.
Okay. When can we start seeing information on what we're pending from Oklahoma City? I think I asked for that at the last meeting.
I think we have that. I thought it was sent to you. Let me double check. But I know we have that information together, so let me check and see. Maybe it just didn't get sent as it should have.
Well, I would expect to see it in the income statement as a hedge number.
It's just never been done before. We can add that in there, for sure.
And I'm only asking for the purposes of the matching principle, right, to ensure that we're offsetting our expenses with the appropriate revenues as well.
Sure.
Just curious. Thanks, Chris.
So the next is our, of course, our income statement. I don't know if anybody has any questions. We've kind of gone over most of the numbers unless there's anything in there that stood out to anybody on... unless there's anything in there that stood out to anybody on the trust as far as questions go.
Apparently not.
Okay.
Let's move on.
So on to our budget comparison, which, again, we went over that in one of the previous slides, but didn't know if there is anything in any of the line items that anybody might have a question on.
I went through a lot of the bills today. Very early. It takes a while to go through the bills.
Yes, sir, it does.
And I found three that stood out to me at the Choctaw Casino and Resort. Three identical amounts of $300, I think, $59.09. Can you explain why we would be spending money at a Native American casino?
It was the Major Crimes Conference. It was put on by OSBI, and that's just the venue where they...
Who attended that?
Investigators. Our investigators.
How many? So three? How long was the conference?
Brandy said it was a week-long.
Okay, so the amounts that were debited on the card on the same day were exactly the same amounts. That would account for the three people.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll be more clear on those when we... We'll put more information on those when we get them, just to make sure we're...
I was surprised.
Sure.
Sorry.
No worries.
Have you gotten to the invoices yet? You haven't, right?
No, sir, that's the next item, I believe.
Anybody else have any questions on expenses? Carry on. I'm sorry.
Because I don't... I don't frequent the casinos. So where is Choctaw Casino?
It's in Duran. Some people call it Durant.
That probably wouldn't have been a viable solution to drive back and forth to Durant.
No, if it's a week-long OSBI conference for our CID members, I can... I'm all for that. They're doing an outstanding job of ours. And the more education we can get, all of our employees, the better off every one of us are going to be. Carry on, sir.
Yes, sir. So I guess the next on the agenda would be the... Sorry, I hit that, Sharon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm asleep at the switch, as usual. Let's entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to receive.
Thank you very much. Second, Mrs. Kimpisi, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, item four, Mr. Sherman.
Let's see, this is...
Invoices and claims.
There any... I believe everybody has a copy of those. Does anybody have any questions on any of those besides the one that Chairman, we addressed a little bit earlier?
I just have one that on the vendor claims and invoices, could we have a month-over-month comparison in another column?
Yes, sir.
So we can compare these groups with what we're spending in the previous month?
Yes, sir.
Whether we're going up or down?
I'll add that to the next.
Some of these things are pretty large sums, and I'd just like to keep track of those major expenditures.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on invoices and claims? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt Mr. Sherman's recommendation, which is for approval. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you very much. Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Item five is a contract.
Yes, sir. This is for our core EMR, which is the health management system. Yes, and this is for the electronic medical records, hardware and software.
Yeah. You have two separate documents in front of you, the hardware and software contracts. There was an error in the previous version, so it's been corrected, and this is the replacement. Contracts on both those items. Any questions?
Motion to receive revised documents.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Now let's vote on the contract itself, please. Is there a...
Motion to approve.
Thank you very much. A second?
Second.
Thank you. This is Kimpisi, call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone. We go to item six, which is the BiMed healthcare staffing contract.
Yes, sir. This is to make sure that we cover ourselves. If we run out of staff or we have people that we have availability to a group of RNs, LPNs, whatever we need to make sure we can keep the healthcare staffing up to community standards.
And this is a contract we already have in place. It's just updated.
It updates it because what we have right now doesn't involve the healthcare. They're just doing the site checks. But yes, this is the same company.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Good thing.
Item seven, which is the AB Med Agreement.
AB Med, this is a consulting firm that we're going to use to help us with not only the RFP, but anything we need from a clinical standpoint that we're not doing now. We're going to have them come in and look at everything to make sure that we're where we need to be, to make sure we're providing the level of care that we need to for the residents.
Any questions?
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes. This company does have a background in criminal justice to healthcare, correct?
Yes.
Other questions?
I have several concerns around the limitations of liability, the venue being in Arizona to litigate, and then finding with us without any med mal in our place. Approval of future insurer is going to drive whether or not they're willing to accept indemnification in this contract. I mean, if we're okay with litigating in Arizona, that's fine. I don't know why we would as the user and the provider, but the limitations on liability are limited to the fees that we pay, which I think introduces a significant risk to the county. Has anybody attempted to negotiate any of these terms?
No.
Let me interrupt for a minute. Rod, do you have any comments about this? Please?
We don't do policy. We don't care whether you contract with these people or not. I can try cases in 50 states. But we did not recommend this. We would not recommend this. Whether it needs to be renegotiated or not is up to you, but we didn't... We don't approve this. But we don't have to. You do. And we do what you tell us to do. I hope that answers all the questions.
I doubt that I'll get any other answers out of you since you're a trained attorney. I think this is a problem for all of us. Yeah. What happens now by not adopting this contract?
I mean, it's not going to affect our operations. We will just go back and negotiate with them on the consulting portion of this and then come back to the trust once we come to an agreement on the terms that the trust is comfortable with.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
I would also advise that you take up the scope of work with them because it is not clear in here that you intend to have them design RFP services. And it's listed as an option, whether or not they would help you with policy and procedure drafting and adoption. So if we're going to adopt it, I'd like to see this represented with everything optioned upfront so we understand the true magnitude of this agreement.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do we have a contract with these folks now?
No, we do not.
Okay. Good enough. All right. We move on to...
We need a motion.
I think we should have a motion at the table.
No, you don't want a table because it leaves the agreement the way that it is. So just no action, and we'll resubmit with a new agreement that's been negotiated, correct?
You sure? I'm just asking.
Yeah, and then... Yeah, no motions, basically.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough. No action on this item number seven. Next one is number eight.
This one's with Diamond Pharmacy, who's our current pharmaceutical provider. So this just continues that relationship with them. Instead of with Turnkey, it's going to be with the county.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. That's why you're here.
Is the current agreement with Diamond expiring? Or are we just replacing?
We're replacing because the current contract is with Turnkey. It's not with us. So we're just continuing the relationship with Diamond, separate from Turnkey.
Got it. Okay, so are we aware there's a five-year pop here? The period of performance, apologies? And it requires four months' notice?
I've read that.
Okay.
I'm not an attorney, so I don't... Sorry, I don't know if that's a good thing, bad thing.
No, I certainly understand. I don't see a price list in here, so I don't see anything that guarantees us rates, which I would be amenable to if there were a five-year period of performance. However, without that, I'm not sure exactly what the advantage would be to signing up for five years. That being said, however, there is a concern in Section 2D, the backup to mitigate the risk associated with unavailable emergency requests for prescriptions should probably be addressed and renegotiated as well because they give themselves up to what could perceivably be 48 hours to provide emergency medical prescriptions if they aren't in hand and longer if they have to be compounded. So up to 72 hours. And I think that with it being in the event of emergency, we would find that quite risky. I also believe, and I could be wrong because I was trying to read these while listening to the notes, also that they want the right to co-counsel with us if we were to be sued, and they were somehow named in there. But finally, on the insurance and the indemnification portion, I'm not comfortable with giving any pharmaceutical company indemnification for their own gross negligence. I don't know why we would be. And I also believe that I understood Brandy to say we don't have medical malpractice insurance in place yet. One, that's extremely risky, just given that October 10th is coming this week, and that is a deep well from which a person would look to gather. But, two, we would be noncompliant with our obligations under this agreement anyways because we don't have medical malpractice insurance, and this agreement requires we do have such. So my recommendation would be that we take no action on this until there's been further negotiation on this.
I understand. What are the implications Tuesday night at midnight?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
We'll check and see.
We need to find out. Find out fast. Insofar as liability insurance, I am meeting tomorrow morning with two of our previous vendors and suppliers on that very issue on liability. Both parties were out of town over the weekend. I tried to change that, but life goes on. Any objection to setting this aside? No action? All right. We're going to move on. It's number nine.
This is our...
DLO.
Yes, our agreement with Diagnostic Laboratory of Oklahoma, which does all of our laboratory work for the facility as far as medical services go.
Any questions? You're good? You're happy?
Motion to approve.
We're second. Oh, I can't say that. Yes. No, I'm not doing that. Is there a second, please? Thank you very much. Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much, Ms. Merkel. I assure you, everybody on this trust is absolutely thrilled you're on board. Thank you very much. That's why we drafted you, as a matter of fact, if you don't remember. Oh, sorry about that. Item 10, contract, local contract with the city of Spencer.
Yes, sir. Know if there's any questions?
By the way, 10, 11, 12, and 13 are all very similar. 10, 11, 12.
10, 11, 12.
10, 11, 12.
12, yeah, are very similar. They are standard contracts that the county uses.
Motion to approve items 10, 11, 12 with Spencer.
I think we need to do them one at a time.
Forest Park. Do we really?
Yes.
We usually don't.
Well, because I said so. How about that answer? Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, number 11 is the city of Luther. Thank you very much. Is there a second? Thank you very much. Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Last one is Forest Park. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Kimpisi, call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mitch. I appreciate it. Item 13 is Criminal Justice Authority Citizens Advisory Board. Mr. Speaker, please step forward.
It's great to see you all today. I have a... My report's going to be brief today. I would just remind everybody that in September, it was September the 14th, we had the opportunity to distribute care packages to everyone who is residing inside the Oklahoma County Detention Center. That distribution was made on a Saturday morning at 9:00 with about 25 volunteers and Mr. Johnson, who participated in that distribution. I wanted to tell you that it's hard to underscore. Mr. Scobie talked about the intangible results of what connection to the community can mean. And we have received notes that people were almost at the end of their rope before they received the care package and what, you know, just that little bit of that random act of kindness meant. Those care packages were distributed on the 14th, on the 15th. We received this thank you letter, the series of thank you letters in the mail from the folk who reside at the detention center. And, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would just like to distribute this to the trustees so that you... I just want to remember, remind the trust that these care packages are privately funded. They cost about $4.15 apiece. Contained in the care packages are a bag of cookies, a bar of soap, a pair of socks, stick of beef jerky, bag of chips, a package of crackers, things of that nature, and a note of encouragement. The note just says, hey, you're part of our community, and we're not going to give up on you. That's all it says, and just a message of hanging, you know, please hang in there and just try and... just try and really hard to create that connection. And so when we do the care packages, which we do once a quarter, for the months that we do the care packages, we do not do the focus groups. So we did not do focus groups in the month of September because we did the care package distribution. However, our next round of focus groups will take place on Tuesday, October the twenty-second, at one thirty PM. Tuesday, October the twenty-second, at one thirty PM. Anybody on the trust, Mr. Johnson, I'm kind of counting on you. I've already, already signed you up, but anybody on the trust that would like to participate in those focus groups, we would love to have you.
You send out a reminder to everybody when that takes place?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Please.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's schedule gets jammed up at the last minute and...
Yes, sir.
Some pre-planning would help.
Yep, yeah, I will send out the reminder. I just want to verbally tell you that it's Tuesday, the twenty-second, at one thirty PM. Really want to say thank you to the staff at the detention center for making those accommodations. Also want to tell you that this past Saturday, super excited to be able to report this to you. This past Saturday, we held a community wellness rally, really trying to celebrate the individuals in our community that are living in recovery and in sobriety, and we had a big, big, big function. We reached out to most of the sober living houses, most of the treatment providers in our community because we wanted to give out some community awards, some awards to people in the community that understand the significance of treating people with dignity and respect and humanity and supporting the people who are trying hard to live in integrity and maintain their sobriety. These awards, I would say, are among the most authentic, sincere. They're not going to be the awards that get, you know, front, front page of the newspaper or anything like that, but man, are they heartfelt. I could not be more proud to report to the trust that three of the five awards were given to individuals who work inside the Oklahoma County Detention Center. The individuals, three of the individuals who received the award were Randall Miller, Crystal Ross, and Constable Kelsey. These are the individuals that helped prepare people for release inside the Oklahoma County Detention Center. And what the folk who got to vote on this award told us is that they're encouraging them. They're saying to them as they're leaving the facility, you can do this, you can make it. Take advantage of the resources that are available, remember who you are, and keep moving forward. The awards that were given to these three individuals were labeled outstanding service that goes above and beyond. Three of the five were given to individuals who work inside the Oklahoma County Detention Center from the recovery community in Oklahoma County. That is big time. That is great big time. I want to say congratulations to Mr. Miller, Mrs. Ross, and Ms. Kelsey for all that they're doing. The final thing, I would, I've got two more things really quickly. I want to say thank you to the trust for working on CAB appointments, appointments to the Citizens Advisory Board. I've had multiple conversations. I know you guys are getting close and we are excited about that. I just want to say thank you for, for working on those appointments to giving us a full and complete Citizens Advisory Board that helps us do our committee work, it helps us meet our quorum, and it just gives us more representation throughout the community. So I want to say thank you for that. And then, Mr. Chairman, listen, I have a super special guest to introduce you to today. We've been doing these focus groups with your blessing and with your direction now for a little over two years, two and a half years. We've been doing these, we're keeping track of what the people are telling us. And what we believe is that when we can bring in the voices of the individuals who are closest to the situation, we're going to have better solutions, we're going to have a better understanding. We believe that when we create connection, it leads to buy-in, and when we have buy-in, it results in shared responsibilities, and when we have shared responsibility, we win, we win. I ran across a gentleman this week in the community, in the community, and he said, hey, wait a minute. I, I think we know each other. And I said, maybe we do, I'm not sure. He said, no, I know we do because you came and you asked me when I reside, when I was in the Oklahoma County Detention Center, how it was going, how we could improve things. He said, you and some other folk, Mr. Johnson, listened to what I had to say. He said, I just want you to know that matters. I said, oh, my goodness, thank you so much for sharing that. Would you come with me to our next trust meeting and may I introduce you to the trust themselves? Because we're trying hard to make sure that your voice is heard in this process. And, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would like to ask Gary Williams to come up and just say hello to the trust. Gary, would you come on up? This gentleman participated in our last round of focus groups that was reported to you, and I would just like for him to say hello and maybe tell you directly what it matters to have a voice like his heard in this process.
How's everybody doing? Well, it was really important because I was in there for over two years. So maybe within like a year, a year and something, he finally came in and then I could actually tell him what was going on in there because of just had somebody to talk to and somebody who asked what was going on. So it was real good.
You guys have any questions? Anything you want to say to the show?
I want to say thank you for your intestinal fortitude to stick with it. And you got saddled up with a group of people who helped. We all needed help at times, we all stumble. We're all very proud of you. Anyone else? Pastor?
Gary, correct?
Yes.
May I ask you a couple of questions? It's a line of questions that are very positive.
Yep.
But you just tell me if you want to go there or not.
No, most definitely.
Right? You already kind of know.
Yeah, most definitely.
Okay, so, isn't that amazing? Like, we hadn't had a conversation. So where, where were you coming from prior to coming here today?
What do you mean?
Like where? Where did you leave? Leave from work or where did you leave from?
Well, I'm working on something. I'm actually trying to get back at school and trying to change focus of life right now.
Okay, that's, that's good. So you, this was so very important for you to be here today.
It was. It was so important that I ended up having to get dressed in the bathroom.
That's where I was trying, that's where I was trying to get to, but I wanted you to say it or not say. You could have stopped, you would have known where to stop me.
Yeah.
But you guys, so Chairman Alba, you said intestinal fortitude. Two years there, but intestinal fortitude to me also is to get here and to change in the bathroom. I mean, that takes, that takes a lot to do that, and I just want to say hats off to you. If it's anything I can help with, Chris, you know where to find me, all right? So thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just got one more thing to say. It's important that we actually listen to what's going on because if we don't, people, they get offended, they get mad, you know what I mean? So it's like a cycle. You know what I mean? So that's what I'm trying to do right now, is break the cycle. Actually listen and talk and say something for everybody.
Anyone else?
Yes, you said you were trying to get back into school, so if it's college, I know a great college that you could attend in the Midwestern area, so, you know. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Take care of yourself. Study hard. Don't screw up again, okay?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. That concludes our report. Just to underscore what the pastor said, I want to tell you, when, when Gary and I realized how we knew each other, he asked, he said, now, where does the information that you guys are collecting go? And I told him about each one of you, and he said, when, when do they meet? And I said, well, they meet on the first Monday in the afternoon at one o'clock in the courthouse. And he said, do you think there's a chance that I could go? And I said, I know there's a chance that you can go. So thank you for hearing Gary and thank you guys for listening and for just doing the great job that you're doing.
I have a couple of, uh, a couple of questions for Mr. Steele.
Yes, sir.
And before, before I go there, all due respect to Chairman Alba. Gary, I, I won't presume that you screwed up the first time. Okay, okay, yeah, we can't, no, people go to the Oklahoma County Detention Center that are innocent. So, yeah, I'm not going to say you screwed, screwed up. I went there.
We all stumble in life, sir.
Huh?
We all stumble in life.
We don't know that he screwed up to go there. Because when I was in front of the governor's mansion and went to jail, I didn't screw up. Matter of fact, the former DA said hats off to me when it was all said and done. And the highway patrol who arrested me, the highway patrolman, when I was today, this morning, in the partner parole board hearing, he stood up, up and shook my hand and said, thank you for that night. You helped us. So I don't know that he screwed up. Chris?
Yes, sir.
You're so very nice and kind, you really are. Too kind sometimes. So really, what, what were you trying to say to us about these CAB appointments? Have the CAB appointments been made?
That what, what I'm trying to say is that they need to be made?
Yeah.
And, and that they're in the process of being made, as I understand it.
Nobody's asked me who my appointment is, so I don't know how they are in the process of being made. So who? I don't understand, we've been talking about this for almost two years.
Yes, sir.
Why are we not?
I'll make sure it's taken care of, sir.
Please, Citizens Advisory Board, they connect even better than we do with the community. So it needs, it needs to be done. Excuse me, everybody, my apologies. Sometimes I just get a little worked up about things, so my apologies to all for getting a little emotional.
Mr. Chairman, question for you, sorry, Mr. Speaker. The research is showing us pretty significant value to the input of individuals' lived experience, and you showed us just yet another example. The focus groups, are you, are we collaborating with any academic institutions to maybe formalize that as a research, a body of research?
We're not, but I would love to. We, what we have done is we've kept track of everything that we've collected, any information that's been given to us internally as, as a Citizens Advisory Board, we review that. We're looking for themes, reoccurring themes. We're trying to ask similar questions as we go in to see what has changed, what areas have improved, and, and we are seeing improvement. I try to point that out. We're, we're truth tellers. So where there's still need for improvement, we, we take note of that as well.
It's such a valuable program. I do think there might be some, there's an opportunity for us to enhance the value of that and to also allow other institutions to learn from our data collection. So let you and I visit about how we might hook up with one of our excellent, many excellent academic institutions in Oklahoma to get that done.
I would love, love that. And I also just want to underscore what, what Gary said, and that is this, he wants to be a part of the solution as much as we want to be a part of the solution. And when we create this shared buy-in, I truly believe there's nothing we can't solve. And, and we all have a stake in this. And so, Mr. Chairman, again, members of the trust, thank you.
I have a motion to accept his report, please. Moved, is there a second? Mrs. Campesi, call the roll, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Item fourteen, announcement of our next meeting of this authority is going to be held on Tuesday, November twelfth. Thank you. Obviously not Monday, that is Veterans Day, so everyone understands. Any other comments or questions? Grips, bellyaches? Put it all on the table? Okay. We have four items that we need to take care of in executive session. We'll return afterwards. I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session. So moved? Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Campesi, call the roll, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. We are recessed.
Yes.
Yes.
And item twenty-two is to proceed as discussed. No?
No, sir. Item twenty-two would be to authorize six thousand dollars for expenditures of depositions.
Those are both the same. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
That would be my motion.
Oh, that was your motion. I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Combezy call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Any comments for the good of the order before we obtain, I mean, stain and walk out here?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Is that right? Is there a second? Thank you. Mrs. Combezy call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We adjourn.
No, everybody I've heard that's got tickets has only gotten tickets for five.